Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. This is a public hearing, City of Isla Palms. 6:45 or ... I can't really see the clock. The chief is too tall back there.
That's it.
We'll make it 6:45. Thank you all for coming. This is a public hearing on ordinance 2011-08 and ordinance amending Title V, Planning and Development, Chapter IV, Zoning, Article, General Provision, Section 5-4-15, which I know you all have memorized. This having to do with beach regulations and providing designated public parking on beach accesses. Before we start, I'm going to ask Douglas to speak here in a moment. We are going to obviously have public input tonight. It looks like it may be extensive. I haven't got the list. I guess I have the list now. I am going to ask everybody to limit themselves to two minutes. Later this evening in our council meeting, we have on the agenda to take up second reading of this ordinance. When we get there, I'm going to ask that we defer that. It will take a vote of council to do that so that we can absorb the input that we've been receiving and the input we are going to receive this evening and take further actions sometime in the future when we feel more comfortable with the total input that we can see. So with that said, I'm going to ask Douglas to step forward and explain the fundamental of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time, I will also be brief. I will give a quick kind of background of the situation and then I'll talk briefly about the specifics of this particular amendment that's having public hearing tonight. As you will remember, several months ago, the Planning Commission and the city council held a joint workshop to talk about really island-wide parking issues. And at that workshop, the city staff was tasked with investigating the feasibility of one particular portion of those concepts that were discussed. And that was the idea of establishing new small parking lots within existing beach-access right-of-ways. So the staff did some research and it was determined that at least two sections of the city's code would have to be amended to implement that concept. And tonight's public hearing is on one of those two amendments. And that, the reason that it's not on both is this one amendment deals with the zoning code and any amendments to the zoning code require a public hearing. So that's why it's specifically on one of the two ordinances. That's a very brief background on kind of how we got to where we are today. Specifically, this amendment, I'll talk about for just a second. The existing zoning code includes a prohibition that prohibits driving on a beach access except in very special situations. Those would include public safety, access to the beach, and other access that's approved by city council. This amendment would change that slightly and it would allow, it would give city council the authority to establish parking, designated parking areas within the beach accesses that the public could then use to park. So even if this amendment was adopted, there would be a second toggle that city council would actually have to take, the action of designating certain areas as open to public parking if you chose to do that in the future. So that's it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. As we call your name, please come forward. I'd like to hear your name again and your address so that the records of Marie can make it complete in the minutes. And we are asking you to limit your time to two, maybe three minutes at most. We want to get through everybody tonight. We're not going to limit it to 10 or 15 minutes. We'll go as long as necessary, but we do want everybody to be brief. And if you just want to say ditto to the prior speaker, that's fine, too.
Mr. Mayor, maybe some people can fill in these seats so they don't have to stand in the van. There's one, two, three, four, five, six seats, at least seven.
We have seats on front. This is Lake Church. You're not going to ...
You're afraid.
Maybe it's Will. Maybe it's you.
Me is my father.
Anyone else? No? Fine. All right. First one, Melinda Mitchell. See, you're here. John's going to do it.
She still reserves the right to speak, I think. She's just going to give number two. John Farrell, 702 Ocean. I have a list, just top 10 reasons to vote against the commercial parking on Ocean Boulevard. Okay, number 10. We'll start at 10 and work over. Hello? Can you hear me?
No.
You speak loud.
Maybe that's on, that's planned.
That's captured for the record. It's not necessary.
It's not amplifying.
Okay. Well, the county park and the city parking lots are rarely full and they're built to handle the day trippers. And that's the reason why we have the county parks. Do we really need the proposed commercial parking lot so close to the county parking lots? The Beach Management Act, it basically exempts us all the way to the Fourth Avenue, from Third Avenue all the way to Beach Inlet. They really don't count that as beachfront. So basically, we're talking about only Fourth Avenue that we need to provide parking because after all, Beachfront Management Act allows us to have one mile on either side of the central business district. So it really doesn't make sense to have these parking nodes, say like at Ninth Avenue. It's just so close to the commercial district. So I'm against the nodes, general. Number nine, we handle more day trippers than Salamis Island and Folly Beach, and we should limit the number of day trippers to what is best for the property owners and the residents. Let's not, let's focus on the property owners, the residents versus focusing on how to handle the day trippers and what's best for them. Number eight, if we build more spaces, they will come. And, you know, and the premise that you're using is that we should handle the average busy summer weekend beach day for these people. And that's not really where it should be. We should actually back it off some. What happens in five years? Are we going to raise the bar and have more parking? So let's draw the line in the sand as something that's reasonable for the residents. Number seven, it's going to cost $300,000 to build the commercial lots. They aren't going to be self-sustaining until supposedly you get all eight of them done. That's just, that's just crazy, you know? Parking meters are really not the answer. If you're going to do something like that, you need to have just the honor boxes because the parking meters are expensive. You saw the article at Folly Beach, how they break all the time, all the different maintenance to come look at them. That's just a bad idea. Number six, Ocean Boulevard would become a cruising street for day trippers looking for parking places. You're just going to get a whole line of traffic going up and down Ocean Boulevard. Number five, the commercial parking lots, by doing it that way, it's moving the problem from Carolina Boulevard to Ocean Boulevard. And that's really not the way to solve the problem. It's just taking one person's problems, shifting it to some other place. Number four, by doing the commercial lots on Ocean Boulevard, it's going to decrease the property values 10 to 20 percent because that's probably the differential between Ocean Boulevard and Palm Boulevard. That means decreased revenue for the city. Number three, it's going to have a negative environmental impact. I'm sure some other people are going to talk about that. You know, the turtles, the trash, the noise, and the additional police manpower required to handle the complaints after hours. Number two, we need a comprehensive plan before we implement this. A partial plan is not going to do it. I think when you look at the entire solution, you'll come up with the fact that we should not have the nodes. And number one, everybody's waiting for this one, we'll be destroying the residential character of Ocean Boulevard by adding commercial parking lots. If we allow the commercial parking lots along Ocean Boulevard, we might as well change our name from the Isla Palms to Myrtle Beach South. Thank you so much.
Beth here? Please.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I am an owner of the property at 810 Ocean, and I strongly oppose the proposed measure. We have a character of beaches at Isla Palms, long history of putting residents first, having nice family areas, and what we're trying to do is to make it a haven for more day trippers. Now, day trippers are fine, but we shouldn't sacrifice the quality of the island and the quality of life for the people who live here, the property owners here, the residents here, for day trippers who can't find a suitable beach elsewhere and want to come down to Isla Palms. There are plenty of places for them to park. They should park in the designated places. If there's a problem with people parking on Carolina, restrict parking there. Get the problem out of that neighborhood, but don't then move the problem to another neighborhood. And that's what this proposal is going to do. It's going to shift the problem to Ocean Boulevard. And it's not just a quality of life issue for the people who have property there, who reside there. It's going to cause more trash, more traffic, environmental problems. I mean, there's no way that you can put these access pads in the beach access areas and not encroach on the fragile dune area. Try as you might, it's just not going to be successful. And we got to think about that. We've taken great steps to try to preserve the wildlife, the turtles, the sea oats, and this is a plan that's just going to hurt that. And I, you know, and then I just don't think it's a fiscally responsible plan. It's going to cost a lot of money to build the pads. It's going to cost a lot of money to upkeep it, and the revenue that's generated from it will not cover those costs. And you're not going to be able to offset those costs from revenue because you're going to have decreased revenue because all those properties on Ocean Boulevard are going to decrease in property values and have less revenues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 702 Ocean Boulevard. And last council meeting, people said, well, if you're opposed to this idea, we need to come up with some better ideas, so I'm just going to present one alternate. I think there's actually two kinds of day trippers who come to the island. I think they're the ones who come and don't cause problems, and then there's the ones who come and they don't know the rules and regulations and they cause a lot of problems. I would like to force the day trippers who don't know our rules and regulations to park in our commercial district and our commercial district only. I think all day tripper parking in our residential area should be by annual parking pass only. By signing up for an annual pass, they would have to sign that they agree to rules and regulations. They would understand what they can and can't do in the neighborhoods. If they violate their, any of those rules, then we can yank that parking permit and then they would have to park in the commercial area. We could blacklist them from getting a permit in the future. But if they follow the rules and regulations, those are the people that I think, you know, should be allowed to park in a residential area. I think there is a distinction between people who follow the rules and people that don't. And I think by having annual parking permits, you could distinguish between those two groups. You could also have zoned permit parking, and that way you can cap the number of people who could park in any area. You could take a particular zone and decide how many cars can park in that area, and you could sell just that number of permits. So I do think there are ways other than these commercial pay parking lots in a residential area.
Thank you. Will, you're next.
Thank you. My name is Will Millman. My wife Marge and I live at 408 Ocean Boulevard. We've been here for 25 years. We consider ourselves very lucky and blessed to be living on the Isla Palms. On Tuesday, June 21st, I spoke in front of the Ways and Means Committee to express my opposition to any proposed paid visitor parking on Ocean Boulevard. I gave a copy of my remarks to Douglas Carr at the Planning Commission. One of the points that I made was that we are zoned SR1, single-family residential, not commercial. Now, as I understand, our city council is meeting to change our zoning. What is that all about? Day visitors should be parking in the county parking lot and not on any residential street. As I said in June, we have elected you to maintain our quality of life and our property values, not to destroy them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Radley, please.
My name is Jim Radley. My wife Susan and I live at 3801 Hartnett Boulevard, a long way from the section that's under discussion. We're also members of the Carolina Coast Surf Club, so we have some other requirements here that a number of people don't have. I'll also add that the first two and a half years that we lived in the Charleston area, moving down from DC, we were day trippers while we had a house built on Isla Palms. And one of the really benefits, we thought, of Isla Palms was the accessibility of the beaches here. Beautiful beaches. We've been all up and down the East Coast. A solution that works, because we used this at Dewey Beach, Delaware, when we owned a house there, is the annual parking pass. Obviously, for people that live there, they park in their driveways, but anyone could have access and buy an annual parking pass that, at there, it was between Memorial Weekend and Labor Day Weekend. Here, I understand it would extend beyond that to be consistent with the kiosks. That resolves a lot of the problems. That takes care of people who come here on a regular basis. Another point that needs to be made, though, and I haven't heard any numbers, is that I understand that they're talking about the nodes being 120 feet in from the Ocean Boulevard. And I took some measurements from Google Maps, and the houses that are there, which clearly are some of the most expensive properties on Isla Palms, certainly more than ours on 3801 Hartnett, the closest one on Third Avenue is only 70 feet from Ocean Boulevard. Most of them are in the 100 to 105-foot range. One's 150, one's 170. So now you have parking nodes that extend beyond where these houses are. Also, other numbers of interest, the distance from Ocean Boulevard to the ocean. It ranges from 290 feet at Ninth Avenue to about 360 feet on Second, Third, and Fourth. So 120-foot parking node takes a significant chunk of that. The question about day trippers, yeah, clearly they can be moved to parking lots, they can be moved out, as we did in most cases, moved out to beyond, you know, 21st Avenue and beyond. Another way of handling this is to handle with parking kiosk. You could put a parking kiosk in that area at the end of Ninth Avenue with one parking place for people to pull in, and they could buy the parking passes. And I think you're going to see a dramatic reduction in the number of people, even day trippers, and believe me, I was one of them, that use that if they have to pay a dollar an hour through a parking kiosk. The other thing that I would like to see, quite frankly, is, is that if that type of thing is implemented, is that at least have the hourly charges apply starting at 10:00 AM to give us surfers a break. I mean, we go out early in the morning. We don't want people in the water. The waves are better then. You don't get winds, and we're usually done by 10 o'clock, particularly the guys that are dawn patrolers.
All right. Thank you. Whitney?
Good evening. We own a home with my brother Abbott Whitney on 403 Ocean Boulevard. We have a lot of parking issues, and we, right from the vacant lot we have on the side there where they dump trash, they also go to the bathroom on that lot. It's, is a problem for parking, period. As far as having access, parking access on the aisle directions of going out, we're opposed to it from the standpoint realistically of sand dunes being destroyed, storm opportunities coming in there. We lost a home on, with Hugo, and so we know, we know what war surge can happen and what can do. And our biggest objection to putting parking lots in that area is basically naturalist and also storm surge and protection. It does make a difference, but we are opposed to this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Jones, please.
I passed. I thought I was rushing. I'm opposed to it.
You're welcome. Wayne Barfield? Did I say it right?
It's close enough. Hard to read.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Wayne Barfield. My wife and I, Mary and I, live at 500 Ocean Boulevard. And as I've looked at this, I'd like to make a couple of comments. One, the Isla Palms is not only known nationally but internationally as one of the most beautiful island communities, I think, anywhere. And that is for a reason. It has been the hard work of a lot of people to preserve the character of the Isla Palms, and part of that character is represented in these residential communities. So I'll make this fairly brief. If we start down the path of inserting commercial into what is currently a residential area, I think we do start down the path of destroying part of what has made Isla Palms, Isla Palms. I very much strongly encourage you not to do so. Thank you.
I see you. You're on.
My name's Mary Ann Luttrell, and I have a home at, we live at 316 Charleston Boulevard, which is actually on the corner of Fourth, Ocean, and Charleston. So we're across the street from one of the proposed parking nodes. And we also own a home on the corner of Fifth and Carolina, which has been our home for, a second home it had been. Our daughter and grandson live there now, and it will again be our permanent residence someday. So we're invested for a long time here on the Isla Palms, and I did send an email to all of you, so I wanted to thank any of you and all of you that emailed back or phoned or anything. I appreciate that very much. As I said in my email, my first reaction was really one of just really feeling sort of heartsick about the notion of putting a parking lot at the beginning of what I think is one of the most beautiful beach paths on the island. I'm, you know, privileged to be able to walk on that beach path, you know, every morning with taking my dogs out for an early morning walk and see bunnies jumping across and all the wrens and everything. It's just a lovely natural area, and it just, so that was my first reaction beyond, you know, thinking strategically about parking. It just seemed like such an unenlightened, is the word I used, in approach to trying to solve this problem. And I also agree that it's just, you know, shifting the problem around. We live across from a vacant lot, like Mr. Whit, we're on the other side of the lot that Mr. Whitney has. And I think I mentioned in my letter also that there are a lot of regular people that are visitors, day visitors, that park parallel along that lot, and that doesn't even particularly bother me. So some of them do trash the, trash the parking area, but, you know, but the thought of them of parking the public in the beach path, to me, just is like, what are we thinking? You know, it's taking our, the value that we have in the marshes, the marsh views and the beach views and devaluing our natural value. Like, where could we find a less appropriate place to put parking? So, oh, two seconds? Okay. The, I thought there were lots of great ideas, and all of, I think the citizens have great ideas. We, I want, I've asked each one of you, my request would be that it, for our parking issue, that we put together some workshops with the citizens, similar to what we did for the downtown revitalization, because I think our citizens have a lot of really creative ideas and would welcome the opportunity to provide input and not feed back to something that's already underway. So, thank you very much.
Michael Servos?
I appreciate the opportunity. I'm Michael Servis. We, families had a home at 415 Ocean Boulevard since the 60s. They started down by the Windjammer in the 50s and moved down to Ocean and Fifth. So we're directly affected by this parking. When I was younger, the people would park there illegally, change their clothes, get out of their bathing suits and their clothes. Just a lot of stuff that intersection, people run that stop sign. We're really concerned about this, and we strongly oppose it.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's the end of my list, but if anybody else would like to speak on the subject before us, please come forward.
I have a lot on Sixth. And one thing that it worries me about it, that you have a beautiful, unintrusive public access and a path to the beach, you go put a parking lot there, you got mom and dad or whatever trying to, residents trying to go to the beach, you got cars there, pedestrians and cars in that narrow area. Mom and dad have beach towels, chairs, beach balls, sand bucket, and the little kids go running out ahead of them trying to get to the beach, and somebody backs over one of them. I think it's a matter of public safety also. Thank you.
My name is Peter Servis. My family has been connected with Isla Palms since 1953. My mother and father lived here until they died a few years ago. Our family's at Fourth and, Fifth and Ocean, the corner. And what I'm, my concern is, who are y'all representing? Us? Or y'all representing the people that don't even live on this island? I think there's a great big parking lot down here. I think it's the county. I might be wrong. But put another Leo on it. Raise it up, two Leos. We don't owe these people that come to this island to come in and tear it up like they do. I think you need to look after our interest, not their interest. And I'm really worried about how y'all acting about it.
Thank you.
I promise I'll make this brief. My name's Eddie Brown. I sent all of y'all a copy of my remarks that I'm getting ready to consolidate very quickly. But Mr. Mayor, members of council and staff, thank y'all for finally addressing this problem. An issue has become a major problem because it has not been formally addressed in the past.
Can you give us your address for the reference?
Yes, sir. 901 Carolina. I don't live on Ocean, but I am Carolina. I've owned property on Isla Palms for 33 years. I've seen the island from an investor, managing my own rental property, and now this is my primary residence, and I am a registered voter now on the Isla Palms. My strong desire in this matter is to get all of the parking out of the residential areas, the right-of-ways and so forth, period. Thus, the parking should be concentrated in designated areas only. The problem has been well documented. I'm not going to go over that again. Parking's an issue. Traffic is an issue. Getting on and off the island, if you had an emergency, would be very difficult. On a common sense approach, as this other gentleman just said, it would seem to me that the city's leadership would do everything reasonable to first meet the needs of their stakeholders, and that is the property owners, the permanent residents, and the renters. Those people who pay all the bills and make the island the attractive place it is. Next, it would make sense to me to accommodate as many daily visitors as is reasonable. I would bet that the Isla Palms is the most accommodating barrier island beach in the state of South Carolina. I know of no other island from Hilton Head to Paulies that has all of the following: a direct connector road from the mainland, four dedicated parking areas in close proximity to each other, approximately 1,100 spaces, restroom, shower facilities, front beach walkway with lifeguards. My suggestions and solutions to this, never make a complaint unless you offer the suggestion. Number one, y'all have already solved the problem. As I just said, we got 1,100 parking spaces. We have all the amenities necessary, control it, management, and keep it to that. Number two, if that doesn't satisfy everybody, then provide daily shuttles for the day visitors from the mainland to the beach. On Saturdays and Sundays, peak days, when it's a major problem, rent parking spaces from the churches and the schools, which will not be utilizing them. I'm sure they would like to have a way to rep, to generate some additional revenue. Or thirdly, as another one of the gentlemen said, build a parking deck and/or expand it, but control it and remember one thing, this is our island. Thank you.
Nobody else indicating they wish to speak?
Any resident here support the recommendation you guys made?
Let me, the lady wishes to speak.
I want to hear from Carolina.
My name is Susan Burns, and I'm at 3603 Palm Boulevard.